For Thursday, June the 2nd, the first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for our June 6th regular council meeting. So council, please take a look at that agenda and let us know if you have any questions. Agenda item four are various liquor license applications. Five is various purchase contracts. Mr. Fenter, how are you? Good to see you down there. I've lost track. You didn't... Things don't seem right here. Yeah. Okay, yeah. I might have called people the wrong name today. Six is various resolutions. Seven is setting a public hearing. Eight is taking public comment on ordinances. Nine is a subdivision plat. And 10 is take action on the following tentative proposal for the budget. So it's... Is this... We've already... We've adopted the budget or is this finally adopting the budget?
No, this is the first step in adopting the tentative budget.
Okay.
And then it has to be...
This is just queuing it up for the next process?
Queuing it up for the final adoption, yeah.
Got it. All right. And so currently, there's no items not on the consent agenda. And it looks like it might stay that way. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the proposed Mesa multi-sport athletic fieldhouse and events complex relating to the capital operations maintenance funding, which would require charter authorization and a memorandum and an understanding with Visit Mesa for the operation and maintenance funding. Gentlemen, good to have you with us, the two Marks.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Mark Hirschberg, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. With me is Mark Garcia, President and CEO of Visit Mesa, who originally brought forward the proposed Mesa Sports Complex a few months ago. And we've continued to have those discussions and dialogue to see how this could be financed and the different options available if the council desires to move this project forward. Just as a reminder, this proposed complex would be located at Brown Road and Eightieth Street, next to just east of the Red Mountain Multi-Gen Center and the existing Red Mountain Park. Would include 110,000 square foot fieldhouse, and I'll highlight some of the features later on. Would include 24 fields, 10 of those synthetic turf, and 14 of those natural grass fields. Each of those fields would include a stadium that could host larger events, larger matches, championship matches, that type of stuff. There is a shift in the field allocation. We've added six more. We've shifted the number of synthetic turf fields to include 10 to allow for more local play, and I'll highlight that again in a second. There's enough space out there for us to allow onsite parking for 2,600-plus vehicles, which would park all of the activity on the campus itself and not overflow into the community. Onsite concession operations, restrooms, locker rooms, meeting and office space would also be included in the complex.
If you have a question, sure. Mr. Richards?
I do. I have a question a little bit about the layout and design of this. So to the right of this photo is the Red Mountain Multi-Generational Center, correct? Is that where we're at?
Yes, underneath the legend, council member.
So there's a considerable amount of bare dirt between the soccer complex and the Red Mountain Multi-Gen Center, as well as parking lots and other features. Why is that dirt there? Why is there so much space between the two complexes? And how come that's not better integrated with existing Red Mountain Park?
Mayor, Councilmember Richards, part of... If this project continues to move forward, we would need to look at onsite water retention as well as a water source, whether it's expanding the existing lake or building a new lake that serves this property and acts as irrigation source for this property. So the idea initially is just kind of was expand that lake if the opportunity exists. So the lake that's existing in the park now behind the Red Mountain Center could be expanded and moved into that area. Or if it... Another idea was maybe it's easier to build its own separate lake, and maybe that becomes a water feature entrance at the corners of Eightieth and Brown, kind of similar to how we redid Riverview and made that kind of an entry feature, at which point everything else could shift to become more integrated.
Okay.
So again, just a bubble diagram as those discussions continued to move forward, but just a concept of how things could fit on the property.
Okay. And just the last comment I have about this is that I'm aware that we haven't done the outreach to the neighborhood. Is that correct? About design, have we engaged the surrounding neighborhoods at all?
All to further to Mark on that one, who's doing... Been doing most of the outreach thus far.
Mayor, Councilman Richards, we haven't specifically engaged that... The residents that are right there, other than through communications through the youth and amateur sports community.
Okay. So when we do that, because we'll have to, the buffering between all these complexes and the surrounding neighborhoods is going to become important. And so that's why I was asking the question about that additional dirt, you know, if the shifting has to occur. When we get to some of the other details, I'll have some additional questions about locations on this. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mark. Maybe before we leave the topic of the lake, it might be good just to explain that the lake is not just a decorative feature, that it plays a role in the maintenance of the fields. I'm not sure everybody appreciates that. Can you just cover that quickly?
Yes, Mayor. We've... We've done with a lot of our park improvements over the course of the last few years, most recently with Riverview. The lake serves the urban fishing community. It acts as a great amenity, a beauty, beautiful entryway, and monument for the park as well. But more importantly, it serves as irrigation source for the park. The idea would be the same to do that here. So we're relying on whether it's reclaimed water or canal water, water off the canal system, to help lower those costs as opposed to using potable water out of the system. We would store it in the lake, pump it out, use that as irrigation source for the watering needs of the property, whether it's the fields, the shrubs, et cetera, can all be used there. And that's the same concept that we have at Riverview. And we'll work that... That's part of the plan at Greenfield Park as the expansion of that project moves on, is to switch that over there. Dobson Ranch Park, we've converted from potable water to the lake water as the irrigation source, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fenter.
Since it's been asked on this public outreach, like the... I saw some comments in the paper when this article first came out, dark skies, you know, concerns about lighting, traffic impact, any initial studies on traffic patterns and how it might affect the surrounding areas? Have we done anything along those lines? Mayor, Councilmember Fenter, at this point, we have not engaged the traffic aspect of it. But if the council wishes to continue to move this forward, that would certainly be addressed, and we'd pull them in to look... And that would help, excuse me, the Councilmember Richards' point, address some of those traffic patterns and where parking lots actually sit and lie so you can move people between the property and off the highway and everything else accordingly, and keep them out of the neighborhoods as much as possible.
And then dark skies as far... I think we have an ordinance, don't we, up in that area for desert uplands?
The... Mayor, Councilmember, the lighting that's proposed for this project is new LED lighting. So it's... We get much muddier. What's out there now, even on the softball fields and the soccer fields, are old metal halide lights. We're actually... The LED technology for sports fields continues to improve. The Cardinals, actually, at University of Phoenix Stadium, just installed it about a year and a half ago, just before the Super Bowl, or the... Was that two years ago now? Then when they hosted it, they installed LED lighting, and it's continued to improve and get better. We're installing LED lighting at the new Fiesta Sports Complex. And that allows us... What the LED lighting allows us to do is really zero in the control of the lights, the color of the lighting, and get those... The light levels right on the field with very little spillover. Just some of the opportunities that can occur on those fields, the 24 fields. Just as a reminder, we always, when we're laying out any park, and that includes ball fields, playing fields, multipurpose fields, we start with a soccer field, just because it takes the largest footprint of any of the sports. Within that, though, you can play football, lacrosse, rugby, and a number of other sports. I mentioned that we had worked with Mark and the Visit Mesa group to add an additional six synthetic turf fields. That's a big win for the community. Originally, there was four. By having those six synthetic turf fields, that allows us to meet a need that we don't have now, mainly for practice space for a number of groups, whether it's football, soccer, adult sports programs. We have a shortage of ball field, lighted ball fields where these teams can practice during the week. That synthetic turf field allows us to... Would have a cooling system during the warmer months, that we would sprinkle it before the teams play on. The technology has improved, that it plays much more like grass as opposed to the old AstroTurf in the Astrodome or in your backyard in some places. It really does meet a need for the community to help us allow practice space out there.
Mr. Richards? How many soccer fields are at Red Mountain Park next door?
Mayor, Councilmember, six existing.
So will we program those together or with a, like, a 30-field kind of complex idea?
The thought would be that, yes, you would program those together. So we would continue to use the existing fields, much as we do today, as practice space and then game space. And then you would reserve... Basically, you run these 10 synthetic turf fields, all week long with practices and everything else. Then come the weekend, whether it's tournaments or AYSO league play or whatever the case is, there would be an opportunity for 30 fields to be mixed into that concept.
Are there any need for improvements to those existing six fields to be up to the same standard as these other fields?
We would take a look at the irrigation system and potentially just, you know, make some minor improvements or, you know, maybe potentially, once some of these fields came online, close those fields down so we can get a healthier strand of grass. Right now, we honestly overprogram those fields just because the need is so high out there for field space.
Okay, thanks.
Again, I mentioned that both of that mix would include some stadiums, a couple of the... You can look at graduations out there, lower-level NCAA Division III, National Junior College Association championship-type events, et cetera. So a lot of different programming opportunities within those spaces as well. The fieldhouse, we've talked...
I'm sorry, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschberg. Are you working in conjunction with Mesa Public Schools to coordinate maybe programs that you'd work together on?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, Dr. Hogan with Mesa Public Schools has been one of the stakeholders that's been involved with Mark from the planning of this and has, I believe, at one of our council meetings even spoken in support of the project and the opportunities that existed for Mesa Public Schools, as well as AIA, and the different championship opportunities that AIA could look at hosting at this... At a complex such as this as well. The 110,000-square-foot fieldhouse becomes the largest indoor event space in Mesa, and it's really... It's a unique opportunity, kind of a... The concept would be an open shell of a building and almost like an airplane hangar, if you will, which would allow you the flexibility to bring different things in, whether you would look at having different flooring types there. So you could have hardwood flooring, sport core flooring, or just use the brush concrete for... Or whatever for different events. But the size of that complex would allow for 12 full-size basketball courts, 24 volleyball courts, 12 wrestling mats. It allows event and banquet space, you know, 5,000 rounds, 650 10-by-10 booths. The opportunities during the day for us to allow programming outside of what's already occurring in our gymnasiums at the Multi-Gen Center and other facilities. You could fill this with gymnastics programs, parent-taught tumbling, those type of activities, dance and cheerleading competitions. There's been numerous conversations between Visit Mesa and some of the Olympic organizing sports, whether it be USA Boxing, USA Volleyball, that have looked to come to the Southwest region but just don't have a large enough space other than the Phoenix Convention Center, which becomes too big in some cases for some of these events. So this would give it... Be a nice opportunity for some of those other groups to use this facility as well.
Mr. Kavanaugh, then Mr. Thompson.
And to that point, having an event space like this, doesn't it really significantly expand opportunities for also conferences, meetings, conventions that need larger space than what we have? And again, this combined with the athletic events, does it create the potential for additional hotel rooms to be built to accommodate them? Because it seems to me that our current convention space, it really is... It's a limiting factor just in terms of size. But doesn't this open up kind of another level of availability of events that may not need the huge size, but they can't do with the smaller size that we have?
Mayor, Councilmember Kavanaugh, absolutely. I can't tell you the number of what we call pieces of business that we have to turn away, whether those are corporate meetings, association meetings, government meetings, because we don't have the requisite space anywhere in the city, whether that's in a hotel or at the Mesa Convention Center. So the opportunity is definitely there. We also talked about, you know, 5,000 people at banquet rounds and other charitable organizations here in Mesa. And unfortunately, when they hold their annual fundraiser banquets, they have to go to Phoenix and Scottsdale because there isn't a ballroom large enough in Mesa to accommodate them. So there are opportunities all over the place for different types of corporate association, government meetings, and of course charitable events.
You know, I'm piggybacking kind of off what my colleague, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, said. Is there really a reason why we need to have a fieldhouse really located out in northeast Mesa? Wouldn't it make more sense then, if it's going to be used or be able to be used for conferences and such, why it wouldn't be downtown? We have Site 17, which would be a phenomenal place for it. Or we could use some of the green space that's over by the existing convention center, so it's property that we already own, so it shouldn't change the cost at all. And I think then it would allow for some of the things that my colleague, Mr. Fenter, was talking about earlier with the dark skies, and be able to shift stuff around. Because if it's a multi-use, it seems like it would be better served if it was more centrally located in Mesa so that conferences and other sports and other activities could be addressed or held at this type of facility.
Well, that does raise a question as... What's the synergy effect of having this building adjacent to the fields? Is there a reason that they are a yin and a yang and they need to be together, or are they separate and distinct?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, certainly all those options are available should council desire, you know, to continue to move these discussions forward. The idea of having this location include this was that if you had that building, then office space could be included, locker rooms would be included, restroom, that type of space would be included in that in the same spot. So you wouldn't have to build a separate... You're already building a building for those amenities. You just keep building it to host those other amenities and events as well. As I've gone on the road to a few trade shows with these event organizers and these organizations looking for spaces like this, one of the things we hear is the need for the locker rooms and restrooms and the office space right there with the Wi-Fi connections and printers and everything else, so they can keep scores updated or check on hotels or move teams and transportation needs and all that stuff around. So that is one of the... That was one of the driving factors, I think, in including the entire property, just in also the size of the land and it was available out there. But again, any of those options, I would imagine, are on the table for discussion.
And I would just add to the... I would just add the fact that the reason we wanted this in East Mesa is that we're almost guaranteeing that, you know, most of the hotel consumption occurs in Mesa. The further you move this west, you know, you could possibly jeopardize, you know, some of that consumption where some of it... More of it bleeding into our neighboring cities.
Well, right now, there's really no hotels out in northeast Mesa. So everybody's going to be staying to the west or to the south anyway.
In the short term, yes.
Mr. Luna, then Mr. Richards.
Two questions. This is BLM land that was deeded to the cities specifically for park use. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes. At BLM, we have a license agreement to... That maintains recreational activity.
The other question had to do with the dark sky ordinance. I don't think this would affect it... Would have any issue related to the dark sky ordinance. Maybe Mr. Rich can respond to that.
Yes, I just conferred with Development Services. So it's a little bit higher up on the bench, so it doesn't include this area down here. So it would be... It's not included in that lighting, so.
And one more comment. Hopefully, this would be a catalyst that we would spur economic development in East Mesa. Hopefully, we could bring in more hotels so that... To accommodate potential users of the field. So, I mean, as far as being the district council representative for that area, that would be my hope, that it would be a catalyst for those kind of developments.
Mr. Richards?
Yeah, I'm kind of starting to agree with my colleagues, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Thompson, that this has, to me, that... I didn't really even comprehend the fieldhouse component of this until a gentleman, Mr. Sessmack, came and visited with me and talked a lot extensively about the fieldhouse. And the more that I've been thinking about this fieldhouse, the more that it seems like the... It's like it's out of place here, that, you know, you can build locker rooms and accommodate... That certainly, you know, bathroom complexes probably have them a little bit better centrally located than have it having it on the far edge of Brown Road. But, you know, the more I thought about it, the more it seems out of place to be out in far north... Northeast Mesa. You say northwest. You know, if we're going to do this as part of any development, I mean, if we're going to spend, what, $22 million is the price tag for the fieldhouse? We really need to look, I think, at either leveraging our existing convention center, because if that's one of the primary drivers for you and you have all this other convention space, and if we added a fieldhouse to our existing convention space, then maybe, you know, we have more leverage there. And then Site 17, boy, you could build hotels there for a long time if you wanted. But I don't know. I think we really... This is the one component I think we really need to take a hard scrub at about where it's located. And, you know, MCC has a need for some of these things. And, you know, I get the argument about bleed over and stuff like that. You know, you're going to capture what you capture. And, you know, I don't think that having it up in northwest Mesa with people driving around... People are too mobile, are going to stay where they want to stay, are going to stay where their Marriott points are, they're going to stay where there's a deal. You know, that's where people are going to choose to stay. But, you know, this is one that... I'm not convinced that this is the right place for that thing. And if we're going to continue to engage this project, we need to, I think, really take a hard look at where that ends up being located.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Mr. Hirschberg, the primary use of the fieldhouse is primarily for sports. Is that correct? Secondary would be the events?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's the... We've identified that market as the market that would use it the most. And events would be the secondary component, essentially, based on what Mr. Garcia has relayed to me in terms of what their booking needs are from the out-of-town market and the visitor bureau. But again, it's that open concept with the movable components so that you can interchange between those different functions.
I just don't want to get convoluted that it's going to be a banquet hall as opposed to an athletic-type fieldhouse. And I think really that's the primary purpose of this.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, to answer your question, Councilmember Richards, and I echo Mark's comments, this, you know, the events would be a secondary driver. The primary driver would be for sports events. Let's remember how we got here. The reason these design elements look the way they do is because they came from the surveys that we did with 400-plus events rights holders. That's the whole purpose for the fieldhouse to begin with, is to be driving these youth and amateur sports indoors that we can't currently pursue because our convention center doesn't have the requisite space to do it. So that's the primary driver for the fieldhouse.
Yeah, I'm not buying what you're selling on this one. The reason is because we've marketed it as a sports complex all along. So we're focused on it being a sports complex. I don't believe that you've even adequately looked at what kind of leverage a fieldhouse in another location could look at. And that's fine, because we're looking at this as a sports complex. But if we're going to go to a... If we're going to explore the full financial use of a taxpayer-funded building, we need to look at all the different ways that we can leverage it. And if we all of a sudden are marketing it next to an adjacent convention center with lots of breakout space and existing hotels, it's going to change your model. I get that, you know? So I realize you probably haven't had the time to really shift your thinking beyond a sports complex, because that's where we've located it in the first place. So I appreciate the explanation, not quite buying it. You know, I think that for $22 million, we better sharpen our pencils and really take a hard look about where this thing gets located in this city.
Yeah, I know you're not done with the presentation, but before we leave that topic, and I understand the emphasis of this building is for athletic events and so on, but in hindsight, I think one of the things we wished we'd done when we did the Mesa Arts Center was locate a commercial kitchen somewhere adjacent to that facility, because we host a lot of events there that requires a commercial kitchen. Would it make sense to have a commercial kitchen incorporated into this building?
Yes, Mayor, that would be one of the factors, because as we mentioned, there'd be full onsite concession operations, what those look like. We haven't got into those details, but commercial, obviously, commercial kitchen function is a part of that space to provide those services.
So that's already incorporated into the design?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, the Councilmember Richards mentioned the construction budget. The estimates continue to be between $56.5 million, $58 million. So we've provided the cost estimate, that playing fields would be about $36 million and the fieldhouse at a $22 million cost for the $58 million total. Construction, capital construction financing would need to come through a secondary property tax, which is estimated at an annual cost of $18 per the median household in Mesa. The operating budget is roughly $2.6 million, based on those commodities and personnel and the contractual services that would need to be in there. Important to point out, also included in that is a capital reserve fund of $350,000 annually, so that we can prepare for replacement of whether it be the synthetic turf fields. They have an average lifespan of about 10 to 12 years. So preparing for that in the future, as well as any other needs that might need to be replaced on the property. Operations revenues would be generated, fully funded by the... The activities that are generated by the Mesa Sports Complex. Those revenue sources would include all onsite revenues and due sales tax from the increased activity there, additional bed tax that's generated net of city obligations, and then a dedicated 1% bed tax. You have as backup material, a letter from Visit Mesa and the tourism industry, who is recommending a 1% increase in the bed tax to support the ongoing operations of the complex. Do you want to mention anything on that, Mark?
No, just that we held a board meeting recently, and our board of directors unanimously supported this recommendation. And I spent several weeks prior to that vote contacting general managers of all the hotels throughout the city, and they all agreed, because they realized they'd be getting a lot of business on the back end.
So if council desires to move forward, then some of the items that would need to be considered, including scheduling upcoming study sessions for more discussion, finalizing an MOU with Visit Mesa detailing operations contributions. And then to move forward with a... With the schedule to call for elections at the June 20th city council meeting, council would need to consider action on a resolution asking voters for 613 charter approval to build a sports complex costing more than $1.5 million. Resolution asking voters for authorization to increase the bed tax by 1%. And finally, a resolution asking voters for authorization to issue a secondary property tax for $58 million for the capital construction cost.
Mr. Richards?
Who's responsible for actually operating and maintaining the complex?
Mayor, Councilmember, that would be the city's responsibility.
Okay, so I see a conflict starting to work its way forward on this. If we have the revenues being generated by bed tax, which your board, very generous to recommend that and realize what the impact that it has on their industry. And so a lot of the dedicated funding is coming from that side of the ledger, and the operations are on this side. So whenever you have the money coming from one source and the operations coming, there's always conflict about how things are being operated and cost constraints and budgetary constraints, you know, how that kind of works sometimes. What's our skin of the game besides the... From an operational standpoint, we're... So we're going to... I know we're going to fund the $58 million to build this complex conceptionally. Do we need to have some of our budget in the game on this to make sure that we are fiscally responsible to the money that others are generating for the operations of it, I guess is?
I'll answer that question, so, Mayor. And Council, Richards. So we are specifically working on a memorandum of understanding with Visit Mesa that first establishes the concept that, as it was laid out here, that all the revenues that are generated onsite from concessions, field rentals, whatever they might be, would be the first dollars that would go to help pay for the operations. And then following that, we would use that, the 1%, increase 1% bed tax. And then following that, we would use that, the 1%, increase 1% bed tax with the idea that that 1% would be considered as operational offset to the sports complex.
What's that number? What does 1% equal?
We believe based on, and again, remember, we used this Elliot Pollak study that we had before us. Right now, it's estimated, let's say, about a little over $900,000 a year. I mean, that grows into the out-years to over a million, but that's initially, it's around $900, $950,000.
And our bed tax now is what, two and a quarter?
Our bed tax now, cities? 5%.
It's 5%? Okay. And so this would go up to six?
Correct.
Correct.
Which is on par with probably Scottsdale and everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be second, we'd be second highest in the valley, Glendale being higher.
Okay.
But as far as a full checkout rate, it's fairly, you know, pretty much in line with the rest of the valley.
So again, the idea is that all the revenues that are generated by this complex would go back towards paying for the operations, whether it's the onsite revenues, the additional 1% revenue. Then we've come up with a formula to try to identify, based on hotel nights, a sales tax number that could be associated with visitors, those coming to this facility. And then if, after all that, if that's not enough to cover the operations, then we would then go into the other part of the bed tax that is being collected. The city collects all of the bed tax. So we would just, every year, we would withhold, we would identify the revenues coming in from those other sources, and if there's a shortfall in covering the expenses, then we would withhold the amount necessary for the remaining bed tax to cover that cost. Now, as we've run the performa, and everybody's tried to put together, what is it, almost a 10-year performa of looking at what those costs would be for us to maintain this, and even having some capital reserve funds and projecting that out. You know, there's a few years where it does very well, and a few years where there may be just a little bit that comes out of the bed taxes being collected today. But remember, that bed tax is also going to grow, and it's going to grow with everything else. And so, at the end of the day, it appears that there will be additional funds that will be available. Visit Mesa will benefit overall because of this, even after covering the operating expenses. And we've been very conservative in our estimates, we've held the room rate the same, we've kept, we've been more generous in the growth in the operation side, but been more conservative in the assumption on the growth in revenues. And at the end of the day, I think, and, you know, Visit Mesa has to continue to look at this, but we believe it still shows that Visit Mesa will generate more revenues coming back to them, even after they've net out the cost.
And that's in the CAP service area, I believe, and anticipating some pretty dramatic increases in water costs out there, are we okay? Do we model the increasing water costs, and how do we handle that?
To the best of our knowledge, there's still a little bit of work to be in, that needs to be done in there, but we believe we've built enough buffer, not knowing exactly where those rates are going.
Yeah, if we could engage Dan on that, our water services department.
We have, they have.
Okay, that seems pretty important. There's a complex in another east valley city that was, I guess it was a Field of Dreams of sort, that had a lot of maintenance problems. How big is our reserve? How big is our cushion? I mean, because if we're dipping into bed tax, I mean, at some point, you put Visit Mesa out of business, because this draws off.
Right, no, but the idea is, even under this plan, they are generating additional revenues above and beyond what they're receiving today, even with covering the operational costs.
Okay, okay.
So I just want to make sure the net is still a positive, not significant, but it's a very conservative number, so we believe it should be, that should be hopefully the minimal amount, it should receive more than that. Also, as we've visited with the community that has that challenge with that facility, a lot of their operation costs today that are having significant impact for them comes from the construction quality, or lack thereof maybe, of the facility. And so they're already having to go back and do a lot of capital repairs to the facility that's not that old.
Okay.
Obviously, we would have to be very careful at the beginning, it's, you know, if you can build a quality facility on the front end, that helps mitigate those kind of expenses later on.
And the last thing that I've asked for frequently in my conversations with Visit Mesa and others who promoted the sports complex was a study of another sports complex that's been proposed, that's had financial modeling associated with it. How did it do after five years? And I haven't gotten that yet, I'm hoping to see something. You know, I think Councilmember Thompson asked for it as well, and it doesn't have to be soccer, it doesn't even have to be the same types of things, just a sports complex that had modeling associated with it financially, and has had at least a five-year performance run. And, you know, there's probably a pretty small number of complexes in the country that might fit that criteria, but, I mean, it can be whitewater rafting, it can be volleyball, it doesn't matter what the sport is, but it just has to be a proposal similar to this that had financial modeling associated with it. Because a lot of times, these things open on a lot of promise, and the financial performance doesn't match the promise. And so I think to help our electorate feel a little bit more comfortable, we need to be able to make that case and show in other places that what we did was correct. I don't question Elliot Pollak, he's stopping the business, right guy to get, but I think we need to be able to, I need to be able to look at my voters in the face and say, hey, you know, this worked in North Carolina, it worked in Belarus, it worked in Florida, and it can work here. So, thanks.
Thank you. I know I had an interesting conversation with the mayor of Frisco, Texas, who built one of these in his community, and he was anxious for us all to fly out and look at it, and he was very high on it. So that might be one place to look, to see if it's apples to apples or not. Mr. Finter, and then Mr. Kavanaugh.
Sure, some questions along the lines of, say this gets a council approval, goes to the ballot. So we're talking about the property, so we're, how would that look? A question, we're going to have to do a charter question, we're going to have to do a tax increase on the tourism, and then the property tax for the associated bonds. Are those three separate questions? How does that work?
Yes, council, it would be three questions. In fact, it's the bottom of that last slide that Mark was about to get to.
Okay, sorry.
It would be a section, it would be a Section 613 charter authorization question, it would be a geo-bond issuance question, and it would be a bed tax increase question. So it would be three questions for this item, for this project, I should say.
And in light, you know, I've been saying this from the beginning, my concerns are, so you have three questions just for this deal. We have the ASU that got unanimous support from the council that's going forward, along with public safety, that would possibly or will have an associated sales tax increase with that. And so what I worry about, and I've been asking Mark before the, you know, by the way, great individual, I have nothing against him, I appreciate his passion, I've just tried to ask the practical question of anybody that'll listen, is, in City of Mesa, in these political times, in a presidential election cycle, these multiple questions, and this has three just in itself, do we somehow, not debating or demeaning any of the quality of the questions that'll be there, do we overwhelm the voter? And so, just worried, that kind of worries me a little bit, that this question alone has three different questions, that would all have to be answered successfully, wouldn't they, to be able to pass, in addition to the ASU, the public safety, and others? So, I don't know if, no, but I've welcomed debate on it, you won't hurt my feelings. There are some really smart people that do this for a living, that says, that say that if you overwhelm the voter with too many of these questions, it could be a problem. And it does feel like a little bit that there's some outreach, some efforts that have not been accomplished quite yet for this area and this question, where higher education's been a focus for years and years that we've been working on, and obviously, public safety, it's always a core. So I'm hoping somebody will engage me and go, Alex, you're full of it, this is why it works. But I have yet to find that person, so.
Mayor, council member Finter, we talked about this beforehand, it's an impossible question to answer. But I will tell you that, and I've mentioned this before, that we've proven in municipal government and in state government that our budgets aren't sustainable without imported visitor dollars. They just aren't. And for a city that's so dependent upon sales tax, like Mesa is, we need to make smart investments in visitor-serving product and infrastructure in order to entice people. And if I could just extend that a little bit, I think what's hopefully not forgotten in this discussion, it's important to talk about the financials and making sure all the numbers pencil out, but let's not forget how exciting this project really is, and what it means for the community, what it can mean for the community. It's a placemaker. I call it a mousetrap, you've heard me possibly mention that before. We don't have many mousetraps in Mesa, and a mousetrap is not only a product that entices visitors to come to Mesa, but almost obligates them. You build this, this is where the tournament's going to be held, this is where people got to go. And again, we put this in East Mesa, you're almost guaranteeing the hotel consumption in Mesa. So it, at the same time, becomes, in my estimation, I think a lot of people who have been supportive of this over time will tell you, it's an enhancement to the quality of life for Mesa residents. There's a lot of people who are sick and tired of driving to Scottsdale, Casa Grande, West Phoenix, Avondale, they'll be saving a lot of money in gas from having to do that weekend after weekend after weekend. And frankly, I think there's a lot more youth and amateur sports families who are going to come out and support this than you perhaps think.
Mayor Paul. I appreciate your passion. You've been wonderful about, and we've had some great devil's advocate discussions about this. There is a political reality that sits in this community. I can remember the day when you couldn't get one tax increase through this community, and here we're going to have multiple tax increases. And as we talked before, I, this by no means, I think there's a concern in the community that somehow some of these things ride a backseat to others. And I don't want to, we may all be pleasantly surprised if this gets through, but do we take the risk and jeopardize a couple of really important, you know, issues in the community that need to be handled? And I know you're fired up to say it, so I welcome it back. Realizing that, yes, I've heard your argument, but if we throw it all on there, and we somehow have get that voter that says, I am overwhelmed, no on everything, so a $58 million project is jeopardizing $200 million worth of probably very necessary needs in the community or wants, so what do you say?
I'll leave it there.
Well, thank you. That's the question that the seven of us are going to have to decide, and that's a very important question. So I know this is agendized as, and we're going to get to all the discussion, I know it's agendized as a provide direction, but the way I see this issue is that we're going to take this kind of under advisement for the next two or three weeks, and then before, sometime before June 20th, we're going to have to figure this out. To what, what do we want to put on the ballot? And to what extent do we think there might, you know, be, we might be going too far or not far enough? So we'll work on that, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussions between now and then. And as long as I have the floor, I'll share my thoughts on this. I love this project. I drove by, I've been running around this piece of dirt for the last 20 years, every time I run the turkey truck. And here's this old, I note, I drove by here a week or two ago, and I noticed this old sign that's falling down, it had the old City of Mesa logo on it, and I think it says something about a future park site. And so it's kind of, this site is destined to be this project, you know, for legal reasons, it can't be anything else, and we can't put houses there, we can't put QTs there or anything else, hallelujah. It's going to be a youth and amateur sports complex, and that's great. And as long as we know that's what it's going to be, wouldn't it be great if we do it now so our generation can experience it rather than future generations? It's not going to get less expensive to build, you know, at some point, we're going to bite the bullet and do this thing. And it's going to be fabulous. So I, I'm very excited about the idea of doing this. My inbox is full of people complaining about a lack of lighted practice fields, and I'm sure that's true for everybody up here. There's a real need for more youth and amateur sports practice fields, and so these turf fields are going to be, we're going to wear them out, you know, we're going to have to replace them every few years, and that, and hallelujah, isn't that great, that we're replacing and wearing out youth sports fields? So I'm 110% on board with this thing, but what Mr. Fender is saying is 100% true. So I think we need to figure out the timing and the political strategy behind this. Is now, is this ballot the right time to pull the trigger? Is a year and a half from now as part of a park and rec bond package, is that the more prudent way to do it? I don't know the answer to that question, but we need to arrive at that decision here in the next few weeks prior to our June 20th council meeting. But I'm committed to this project happening, it's just a matter of when, and it's got to be sooner than later, but I don't know when that, I'm trying to figure out when that is for me. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Luna? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Richens.
Well, I don't agree that the destiny of this site is a youth complex. I don't think we've done adequate outreach to the neighborhood to do any kind of design shred, to get any kind of input yet. And that's fine at this stage of the project, but this has been a very top-down project, it has not been a bottom-up. It almost makes me miss I- Mesa. Because I, the thing I liked about I- Mesa was that it was driven by residents, it was driven by citizens, and this has been top-down the whole time. We haven't heard from anybody out in District 5. There's a lot of things this piece of property can be, it's just the only deed restriction is that it needs to be for use for outdoor recreation. So, you know, that's a very simple thing, and there's, in a fiscally constrained environment and a politically constrained environment, I think we need to think long and hard about what our priorities are, and you can build a fabulous park out there for four, five, six, 10 million dollars. So the question I have for you guys is, you know, it's easy to spend other people's money, we do it all the time. The question I have for you guys, if you had to choose between the two elements of that, which one would you choose? And saying, saying they have to be together is not an option. I need to know if you have a priority on the soccer fields, or is the priority the fieldhouse? Is there one, you know, if you had to choose between the two, what would you choose? Each of you, I'd like to answer that question.
Well, Mayor, council member Richens, from our perspective, and again, our whole purpose for doing this is to bring more visitors to Mesa and their dollars and subsequent tax receipts. And the best way for us to do that, to bring more of them, would be through the fields.
Fields, okay. Mark?
Mayor, council member Richens, you know, the fieldhouse piece excites me, you've heard me talk long and hard about how there's not enough indoor programming space, and sometimes we forget that six months out of the year, it really is hot here, and too hot to be outside in the parks, but still a need for recreation. But just as your email boxes fill up with requests for more practice fields, or angry groups that can't get on the practice fields, they start at my inbox, because I'm the one that has to say no, we don't have anything else available. And the fields, there, we have a shortage of fields in this community.
So your priority would also be the fields? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your great presentation. I live probably three quarters, three quarters of a mile away from the proposed area, so to me, that's a real exciting. We know it's BLM land, is designated for park use, so to me, this is an appropriate use of this facility. You know, I just, one of the things that I do as a city council member is, when I go out in the community, I've let people know about this. And most of the response that I've been getting, I've been very positive, people want this. People want to put some kind of sports complex in that area. So I've been real happy with it. I, you know, I do my meetings, I've had coffees, and I've talked about this, and I've had very positive responses, I've gotten a number of emails from amateur sports advocates really wanting this in City of Mesa. To me, this is great synergy, working with the Mesa Public Schools, working with the community there, I think there's a great opportunity for us, I would hate to miss it. Certainly, I'm a real advocate for soccer, and would welcome any sports in that part of the area. I think the whole area certainly is a great opportunity that we need to take advantage of. So I think you've done a real good job. I do agree that we do need to meet with the residents there and get their input in terms of how we go about this, this is very essential. But we have, in terms of my office, I have communicated that information to my residents that live in that area. So thank you for a good job, hopefully we can move this forward.
Mr. Kavanaugh, or Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Years ago, our council had the wisdom to say no to the Field of Dreams, because there weren't a lot of questions. There were a lot of too many questions that we had that really weren't answered, and it shopped and went somewhere else, and I think people acted kind of hastily on that, and they've been paying the consequences for it ever since, and will keep doing so. This, however, is something that I think has had a tremendous amount of due diligence in terms of the need, in terms of the costs, in terms of the revenues. And it is something that would be a mousetrap, because we need the
And it is something that, that would be a mousetrap, because we need these kinds of venues to attract visitors. And, and the reality is that much of our city services are paid by people who are visiting our community. Everyone pays sales tax. People who stay pay the bed tax. That goes to pay for police, fire, parks, and, and everything else. That's, that's the nature of the beast of the revenue system that we have, and I think this is, this proposal addresses a number of needs for the community, and I particularly do like the integrated approach of having the fieldhouse and the, the fields are located associated with each other because I think it gives you the most flexibility for different kinds of events there. We know there's a need for indoor athletic activities in six months out of the year. We know, for example, from our sister city in Burnaby, the success of, of programming facilities that can be used year-round, exterior and interior. And this is, the fieldhouse element is one of the missing links, really, that I know we have a gold medal award-winning program, but this, this is something that I think is helpful. In terms of input from residents, at least the, the initial reaction I had from people saying, oh, no, you're, you're building a sports complex for somebody else to make money off of, and it's, no, this is not Cub Stadium, or something like that. This is not the Cardinal Stadium. This is something that I, I tell people, it will be owned and operated by the city. Oh, revenues are coming to the city. Oh, well, that's okay. We like that. Oh, it's gonna pay for itself and provide additional revenue, at least under the most conservative estimates that we see, which is why I think the due diligence was good because you did use the, probably the most conservative economic consultant in Arizona to, to look at figures. So it, it isn't something that the stardust gets in our eyes, because I think the reality shines through. So I'm hoping that we move forward with it, but it, it is, it is a question that, that we all have to struggle with in terms of what we present to voters. You know, the, the more information we provide to voters, Mesa voters have proved time and again, tell us what you want to do with the money, what's the purpose, where is it gonna be, how will it positively affect us? Who, who will it help? Will it hurt anybody? How much will it cost? And who's gonna pay for it? And I've gone through those four questions time and again, and, you know, the, the equation works out for me. But again, I understand the concern of, and political reality that we have to struggle with over the next couple of weeks because we, in theory, could be presenting, you know, multiple important issues to, to voters in, in a high turnout election year. And this election year is unlike any that we've ever seen anyway, in terms of where people are. So that, that is a legitimate question that, that Councilmember Fenter raises. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Glover.
Chris, what does this do? What does our debt capacity look like, knowing that in probably 2018-ish, we're gonna have to go out and brick and mortar a couple of new fire stations and throughout some of the districts, specifically District 6 probably more than, and 5 more than the others? But what's our debt capacity look like?
Yeah, we were below 50%, I think, so we're still have plenty, this would not, I mean, obviously, it consumes some of that capacity, but it doesn't, in the foreseeable future, as far as future projects for public safety and streets and parks, I think we'll still be fine.
Do you think this would have any impact on the 2018-ish, doing a public safety?
Not from a fiscal standpoint. I mean, again, it's just every time you add that increment of dollars to the property tax, at some point, you have to ask your question, when do you reach that threshold? And maybe that's something we should bring back to the council, maybe in the next discussion, is just to show kind of where we stand today on the secondary property tax, that our median home is, is what they're being, cost of the secondary property taxes assessed versus other communities. At some point, obviously, you'll, you'll reach a number where you'll have to say, okay, now, when you compare a tax bill in Mesa, secondary property tax bill in Mesa versus other communities, how does that relate? And that's, that's something we could provide in the, in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Glover.
I am very supportive of this project. I know that Councilmember Fenter says that, I'm like, obviously, Mark is very optimistic, and so am I. I think this is a great project. I think that especially for this land use, this is one of the things that can be a point of pride for Mesa. Like Councilmember, Vice Mayor, I apologize, Dennis, Kavanaugh said, I'm like, this is one of the few projects we're actually putting towards the voters that can have a positive return on investment, whereas the other ones, not really. So there's no guarantees. And I think that Visit Mesa has worked really diligently with our Parks and Rec Department, and this can be a true community asset. And Visit Mesa's on the hook for this as well, and they've put some skin in the game, so it's not like they don't have, basically, that will to go forward. So I'm very supportive of the location and of the project.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, thank you. I, I know there's been a lot of due diligence, a lot of hard work over the course of months to bring this project to this point. So thank you to, to Visit Mesa. Thank you to Mesa City staff for all the, the hard work that's, this is a great question. This is why it's fun to be on the Mesa City Council, is to make these great decisions. So we'll chew on this for the next few weeks and, or a couple of weeks, not, we don't have that much longer. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. That was, so, obviously, wanting, this is an opportunity to brief the council, put it, set it on the table for everybody to kind of take a look at it. We have next week, June 9th. We have the following week, June 16th, Thursdays. And then really for action for all of the items that would be referred to the ballot would be June 20th. Now, in order to prepare those items from a legal standpoint, we're gonna move forward with the assumption as, just so we have the work done, so we're not scrambling at the last minute based on this assumption, and we've done some work. We're gonna continue with the finalization of the MOU. Maybe we could spend a little bit of time next week, just reviewing with the council the MOU, reviewing kind of where we stand with the secondary property tax. And then really, the final decision, I guess, the go or no-go decision about whether to put on the 20th agenda really comes on the 16th of June. So, and we'll, next week also, on the 9th, we'll be presenting, providing the presentation to the council about the financing options for public safety and higher education. So you'll have that, but, you know, the 16th is that Thursday, we review the agenda for the Monday 20th meeting. So that's kind of just trying to put in context of where, where this is all headed. And if there's any other information that we can provide, please let us know, but that's, is that comfortable with everybody if we move in that, at that pace? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Thompson.
I think one of the things I'd like to see is really is, is our guy, Mark Hershberg, really take this project and vet it. You know, do the community outreach, do the pieces that have missed, that have been messing, make this, maybe transition this a little more from the bottom to the top, as my colleague said, instead of the top to the bottom. And let's make sure that we're doing the right thing for the community.
Be difficult to do community outreach between now and then, but I, I think clearly at some point, that needs to happen. We have already, I've heard from some concerned neighbors next door, and, and I'm, I'm absolutely certain we're gonna get a lot of pushback from folks who are used to having beautiful, pristine desert across the street from them, and all of a sudden, there's kids running around and, and lights on at night. That's not, there's gonna be a, some pushback to that, no question. And I'm not suggesting we don't do the outreach, but I admit, the timing of it is probably not gonna be before we make this decision.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, not, not as far as making the decision, but, I mean, I think we can move forward making the decision, but as, as this develops, I'd like to see, you know, some of those issues resolved that the neighbors may have.
Yeah, no, and Mayor and Council, you know, we're so early in the process. These are very conceptual drawings. The city staff really, I mean, I haven't had to spend time to really sit down and kind of view this and kind of make this work because, and one of the reasons, you know, we gotta look at the capacity for traffic, and do we want people coming in from the neighborhood side and driving by, you know, so there's a lot of questions, and, and a lot of that will come from, a lot of the, understanding the issues will come from the discussions with the neighborhoods, because they're the ones that know what it's like out there, and they're gonna raise an issue, and we're gonna go, we hadn't, we hadn't thought about that, and how we go to address it. So there's a, if this moves forward, there is a lot of that discussion that will have to take place, absolutely.
As far as ballot language and how things are done, do we have to have that completed by the 16th or for the 20th?
Yes, yes.
So that's, there's a lot of work that needs, in my mind, of how this is stated and done.
Right, and we can start sharing some of that language with you fairly soon. We've been working on some of that now. So we will, again, we'll add that to our list of items that we can share with council next time. All right? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any more questions, discussion on this item? Hearing none. Next item on our agenda, thank you, gentlemen, great presentation. Next item is information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Any questions regarding those items? Hearing none. Next item is approved minutes from an executive session held, held on May the 19th. Seconds, thank you. It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting. These are the minutes that, we're approving those minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, Mr. Luna?
No.
Mayor, yes. There's a motion and a second for approval? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Hearing none. Mr. Brady.
Mayor, I'd like to invite Diane Gardner. If she'd come forward, please.
I apologize, I had a question on an agenda.
Too late, Mayor. Diane is retiring from the city. We just wanted a council opportunity to recognize her, and 28 years of service with the city. Started out as a?
Office Automation Analyst 1.
Diane, you need to sit down so we can get a picture. For us to get the right picture on Channel 11, we want to get your good side. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You've been, she, for those who might not know, Diane plays a very critical role in our city with the information technology, and, and thank you for, we are, that's one of the strong points of our city, and that's due to your, your great career and your great efforts. So thank you. You'll be sorely missed. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Diane. I first met you 20 years ago this month, and I just want to compliment you on stellar service to the community because you're the person who gets things done, and you do it quietly, effectively, efficiently, and really, you're a model of great public serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I have loved being the CIO this last five years, and a lot of that is because of the leadership of Mr. Brady and the senior city manager's office. But Mayor and Council, I, I've, 28 years, I've seen a lot of mayors and council, and you have been fabulous these last five, eight years. It's been a joy to work with all of you. The talent in this room behind me, you have an amazing pool of directors here in the city to lead this city. I'm very excited, we have a great IT department. The people over there are working tirelessly, they love the mission, they're excited about the vision. I'm very excited to have Joe Sugihara, who is going to take over as acting CIO. I'm very excited that he's one of the, probably not allowed to say this, but he's one of the three finalists for the recruitment that's going on for my job. So I leave you in, in great hands.